Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item of business is our spotlight for tonight on the Ponus Ridge Middle School Robotics Team.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our spotlight section of our agenda for tonight, Tuesday, May 5th, 2015. Tonight, we will be honoring Ponus Ridge Lego Legends Robotics Team. Tonight, the Board of Ed is proud to recognize Ponus Ridge Middle School and the Ponus Lego Legends Robotics Team. The team is part of the Ponus Pride Project, which is an after-school homework and enrichment program in partnership with the Carver Foundation. Now, it's in its third season. The robotics program is both challenging and rewarding. Each year, students are presented with a playing surface which has many obstacles. Students must use their creativity, as well as their problem-solving skills and communication skills to find solutions, and must also cooperate as a team. In addition to researching and reporting on the year's theme, they have to plan, construct, program, and debug an autonomous robot in order to secure points. Over the course of the program, the students participate in activities that encompass science, technology, engineering, and math. Concepts such as motion, position, direction, and speed of an object are introduced. Students learn about the mechanical advantages of multiple sensors, as well as programming logic. Engineering concepts such as mass, weight, force, center of mass, and the benefits and constraints of different designs are introduced. Ratio proportion, angles and degrees, comparisons, PI, and solving for variables are also introduced in this program. The Ponus Ridge Robotics Team is part of the first Lego League, which is an FLL competition. The league organizes regional qualifying events throughout Connecticut, as well as one state-level event each year. This year, during the qualifying event, which took place at Greenwich Academy, Ponus won first-place programming award and was awarded a golden ticket to participate at the state-level competition. The Ponus team also won first-place Gracious Professionalism Award, which is based on the league's core values, which encompasses teamwork, cooperation, friendly competition, and of course, having fun. On behalf of all nine members here on the board, we'd like to recognize the following students and teachers. We have student Shuri Akarapu, Dablin Duncan, Jonathan Joseph, as well as their coach, Dr. Pierre Louis, or Louis, and co-program directors Joseph Giandurko and McKenley Harrell. We'd like to congratulate all of you. We do have certificates here that we'd like to present to some of the students that are here this evening. So our first student is Shuri Akarapu. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Nice to see you again. Everybody that comes up here does that.
And we also have Dablin Duncan. Thank you so much.
Good job, Dablin.
Also this evening, student Jonathan Joseph.
Jonathan, congratulations.
Congratulations, Jonathan. Good job, Jonathan.
And I believe we also have Nicolet from the Carver Center. If she could stand up?
Navelette.
Navelette, I'm sorry. Navelette, sorry about that. And we also have Damon Lewis from Ponus. Mr. Lewis, would you like to come up? We also have a certificate we'd like to present to the school. Thank you. We also have Joe Giandurko over here. Thanks so much. We also have Mr. Pierre Louis, if he wants to come up here as well. Oh, I missed him. I'm sorry. Too many people. I apologize. Sorry. Thank you so much. I know, Joe and I spoke about this a couple of months ago, and I'm glad this finally came about. They were able to honor the students tonight. It really is a fabulous program, and we want to thank everybody for participating and really being part of this. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is public comments. By the way, anybody who was here for the celebration, if you have kids that need to get home, you're free to go, but you're also welcome to stay. It's entirely up to you. All right. So next is public comments. Mr. Kessimas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public comment section, thank you for coming out. When I call your name, please come to the podium. You will have three minutes. Please keep your comments civil. When there's 30 seconds left, I will wave my hand, and at three minutes, please close. Let's see. First, we have Ms. Grace Vetter.
Good evening. Grace Vetter, 1580 Rock Road, Norwalk, Connecticut. Tomorrow, May 6th, is National School Nurse Day. I appreciate the Board of Education's consideration to recognize this day and our 21 nurses who work tirelessly to ensure our students are healthy and safe. Thank you. But there is another person who also deserves recognition. Dr. Norman Weinberger, our school medical advisor, who has just been named the School Nurse Advocate of the Year by the Association of School Nurses of Connecticut. If a person is measured by the good that he does and the lives he has touched, Norman Weinberger is a giant among men. As a practicing physician for almost 50 years and a renowned pediatrician in Norwalk for over three decades, Dr. Weinberger has literally cared for and treated thousands of our children. Under his watchful eye, generations of young people have grown to adulthood and brought their own children to him to receive the same expert and loving care. But Dr. Weinberger's service is not limited to individual children and families. He has taken a more global approach to childcare, writing the practical self-help book, "You Just Don't Duck Tape a Baby." Always able to infuse humor with the challenges of raising children, Dr. Weinberger is a well-read and respected expert. Moreover, for the last 20 years, Dr. Weinberger has shared his expertise in pediatrics and public health with Norwalk Public Schools. As school medical advisor, Dr. Weinberger oversees the health issues of our entire student population, impacting policy and procedure to ensure the health and well-being of all. Over 11,000 students are under his watchful eye at all times. Parents can rest assured that the good of all is Dr. Weinberger's only agenda. Dr. Weinberger is also our school nurse's greatest supporter. He values and respects our nursing specialty and recognizes that it takes a qualified school nurse to manage the day-to-day operations of a health room and implement the health policies and procedures vital to our practice. As coordinator of school health services, I know firsthand that he is our greatest champion. He is always available, approachable, and kind. It is invaluable to know that the district and I have Dr. Weinberger as an ever-present resource. On this special day for school nurses, I congratulate Dr. Norman Weinberger, School Nurse Advocate of the Year. No one is more dedicated to school health or more deserving of this honor. Thank you.
Okay, now, next we have Ms. Navelette Peterkin.
Good evening. I'm delighted to be here in support of our Ponus program. I don't know if you-
Can I have your name and your address, just for the tape?
Oh, it's Navelette Peterkin, and I'm at the Carver Foundation of Norwalk, 7 Academy Street, Norwalk. Again, I'm delighted to be here in support of our Ponus program. I'm not sure that you're aware, Carver is the largest provider of middle and after-school program in Norwalk. We serve hundreds of kids at all middle school and at each of the three high schools. Over the past, since 2008, we started our partnership. We started with West Rocks Middle School and Nathan Hale Middle School, and we have expanded to now include all the schools. As you can see from the demonstration here, from our programs that we have, we have a strong STEM program, thanks to our collaboration with several corporations and the support we receive. GE, Xerox are strong supporters of our STEM program. We operate a little bit differently. We hire all certified teachers and teacher's assistants from each of those schools to work in the program. Our partnerships are with the principals, and each principal will be here to tell you, if they were here, they'll tell you the value that Carver brings to the Norwalk Public Schools. We do our work pretty quietly, but we are serving hundreds of kids. I don't know if you know this, but we have hundreds of kids who are on waiting lists, who needs our program and can't take part in the program. And we would hope that, you know, in the future, we'll get some more support from Norwalk Public Schools. We get the in-kind support of using the facilities and having access. But we also have, over the past two years, we've provided several summer programs. Last year, we had five summer programs. We had over 600 students in summer. And we hope to continue with that in the future. So, again, we look forward to future support from Norwalk Public Schools, and we love what we do. And to be able to provide the kind of support that we do, the kind of programs that we do, both academic enrichment programs within the school, and we're having results. If you look at some of the outcomes that we have, they're great. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Mr. Bruce Melion.
Bruce Melion, Norwalk Federation of Teachers, 9 Mott Avenue. I have several items to bring to you. On your desk, I left two of them tonight. One is a pamphlet called Norwalk Federation of Teachers Scholarship and Awards Program, which we do each spring. We have raised over the last 20 years $50,000, all that money going to Norwalk Brian McMahon students, as well as BRIGGS. Also, we now do recognition on the eighth-grade teams of two students on each team for excellence based on a criteria. So that's first. Second, on the yellow sheet of paper, we have received additional recognition nationally, and it's called the Union Management Partnerships for Success. And if you note on the bottom of the yellow sheet, Connecticut Literacy Program wins acclaim. This went all over the country, and it is a literacy program that I have been talking to you about, and we just keep getting wonderful acknowledgements. And this went national, as many of the other things have as well. Third, unfortunately, in tonight's Norwalk hour, we had a teacher who passed away on Saturday, who was really well-respected for a very, very long time in Norwalk, and that was Marilyn Virginia Spence, who taught at Norwalk High School, who taught at Brian McMahon, and who was part of what we know as team teaching and the Norwalk Plan. And she was just really well-respected among her colleagues and students as well. So with this passing, it's a loss of a really outstanding educator in the fullest sense of the word. Fourth, I think that there is a need, Heidi, through the Policy Committee, to have some discussion about how we're going to deal with certain events that are unfortunate that may occur. There's been a practice of how those would be handled, but it seems that in the last 24 hours, those have not been handled the way they really should be handled. And if somebody's charged with something, that's fine. But when that hasn't taken place, to besmirch a person's reputation in a variety of different ways is just absolutely wrong. And I think we need to have a full, engaging conversation about how that should be handled. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Joseph Giandurko.
Good evening. Joseph Giandurko, 163 Chestnut Hill Road. Husband to Councilwoman Shannon O'Toole Giandurko. I'm just here to speak a little bit more about the Carver and kind of give you the background information about my program and basically the middle school program. We've been in existence for four years. Each year, we've served over 100 at-risk youth from our building population. We've turned kids away because we just simply don't have the numbers of staff members to accommodate all of them. Our program is really broken down into three main areas, where we do homework help, enrichment, and physical fitness. In terms of enrichment, we focus on things the students like to do, like cooking. But then we also have things that will be outside skills, which the students will carry on with them in the seventh grade, eighth grade, and on into high school, and those are Lego robotics, and you saw what they could do. We also have CPAP, which is a Connecticut pre-engineering program, to help the students just kind of find success in many different ways. Overall, our program, from some of the parents I've spoken to, often provide the link between home and school because they can contact us, they meet with us, they see us when they pick up their son or daughter every afternoon. We're not only just based on academics, we do community outreach from our program. Each year, we focus on doing a food drive around Thanksgiving, we do a toy drive around Christmas, and we also work to help clean up Ponus itself, so we'll bring in bags and we'll kind of pick up some of the garbage and stuff that we see around the building. Overall, the last thing I could say, and Navelette had mentioned it earlier, was that we do get results. Our students have, traditionally, over the four years that we've been looking at the numbers, have a higher attendance rate in school, a higher attendance rate, obviously, in the program. Their test scores are improving, their grades are improving, and there is a low occurrence of behavioral problems that occur in the other classes. And it's not just because of me, it's because of staff members that I work with, my administration, who's also here. But it's really the, Navelette works as that hub to get us all together, and we work well to make sure the students of Ponus, and I know the other programs at West Rocks and Nathan Hale enroll and do the same, but it's really to help our kids achieve more each day. So, thank you.
Thank you. And next is Ms. Emily Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, if I might. These young people and the adults that will be coming down with them are part of my mayor's Youth Advisory Council. And they came to a meeting the other day and said they'd like to speak on an issue. And they've told me that they want to get more involved in coming to each Board of Education meeting and also going to the common council meetings. And if they could, if I could have them each introduce themselves for your certification. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Emily Thompson.
I'm Amina Chowdhury.
Hello, I'm Jamal.
Okay, so, we know that a topic that's recently been discussed by the Board of Ed is pay-to-play, and we appreciate you guys talking about it. We think it's really important. Following with that discussion, we would like to share with you the opinion of some of our fellow Norwalk High students in order to get their opinions out there. And we're the Mayor's Youth Council, so our purpose is to just give a voice to our fellow students because we think it's important that they know what's going on in Norwalk and that we get their input so that the best decisions can be made for them also.
I have read the recent article addressing the possibility of athletes having to pay $100 in order to participate in sports. This angers me for two reasons. Firstly, some people just simply can't afford to pay $100, especially if they also have to buy equipment for that sport as well. Secondly, sports helps people. It could either be the motivation of maintaining the required GPA in order to be able to participate in the sport or the unexplainable bond between teammates that drive a person to do good things. If these reasons are not enough, get this. According to the Women's Sports Foundation, female high school athletes are 92% less likely to get involved with drugs, 80% less likely to get pregnant, and three times more likely to graduate than non-athletes. Also, high school athletes are more likely than non-athletes to attend college and get degrees. Team captains, MVPs achieve in school at higher rates. I am not just speaking for myself, I am speaking on behalf of athletes my age who not only have a passion for their sport, but a need for it too. Please take the time to think about this idea.
Thank you.
And the youth advisors are Darlene Young and Councilwoman Eloisa Melendez.
Okay, so I thought I wasn't going to say anything, but I don't know too many times when I don't say anything. So Eloisa and I have been meeting with these young people maybe every two weeks or so, and we do have Nora, who's missing from the group. And the group was a little bigger, but you have attrition, and you have young people who are involved in sports and other things. And so, you know, these young people have been committed in coming on a regular basis. And so, that letter that Amina just read, someone wrote because they mentioned it in school, and someone sent her that letter, and she wrote that. And so, you see this Eloisa here. So she and I meet with the young people and kind of talk about the different things that are going on in the city, and a lot of things they don't know about. And so, we find it's a good way to get them involved. And so, we're just in the beginning stages of all of this, and we have to come up with a mission statement and a goal and all of those things. But commend the mayor on having the vision of putting this together, because I think it's long overdue. And I think we have, all the three schools will be represented and have been represented, and that's our goal, to make sure that that is what's going to happen. And so, I commend these young people, I commend the mayor, and Eloisa and I just are in the background, and they make it all happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is all that has signed up.
We're going to find out how good the mayor is as a cameraman over there.
Yeah, I know. I'm going to give it back to the young man here.
All right. So we'll now move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Connolly.
Okay, before Ms. Bobowick from Saskia's report, there are just four brief items I want to bring the board up to date on. One is the after-the-bell program. It did start yesterday at the South Norwalk Community Center with 60, I think it's 67 or 62 children. All of the administrative hiccups have been resolved, and we look forward to a successful, albeit, short period. And we're also, as I said at the last meeting, working on trying to develop a program design for the 15, 16 school year that would also allow us to access some federal funding, particularly under Title I. And one of the things I know that we would like to do, and I realize the board's schedule is very busy because of the superintendent's search, we would like to develop an open house within the next two weeks while the children are there so the board can have the opportunity to visit the program and learn a little bit about it. Second thing is, we are instituting next week, on Monday, a NOVA time for all of our employees. Basically, this is, we did have a NOVA time program before, where people swiped in and swiped out. That was part of our payroll system. In evaluating our building safety, we felt it was really necessary to have an inventory of who is in the building at any one time. So if there is a crisis in the building, if first responders come, they can get an accurate list of all the employees, all the students in a particular building. So what we're doing is instituting on Monday, any employee who normally doesn't swipe in and out would have to swipe in and out anytime they're in a building. And it's basically, this is not an attendance program. It's a program to give us and our first responders an accurate, real-time number of people by name that are in a building that, God forbid, we have some kind of, we have some kind of emergency that our first responders need to have an accurate count of population in the building. And some people are resisting it, but I have to say that I want to have a NOVA card now and also hold me responsible, too. Every time I go into a building and out of a building, I follow this process. So it's, again, an effort to make our, to plan well for safety reasons and to work very, very collaborative with our first responders here in Norwalk. So it's going to be implemented for everyone as of Monday. That includes teachers, administrators, nurses, executive secretaries. And what it means, if you're an administrator like me, it means you're going to do this several times a day. Every time I go into a building, I'm going to swipe in. When I leave that building, I'm going to swipe out. And it doesn't affect payroll, as far as all these people are concerned. And all it's doing is giving us an accurate account of what's going on in every building by population. Third thing is a piece of good news, and I wanted to share with the board and give you a copy. We've had a lot of discussion on special ed costs and that sort of thing. And I was delighted when Rich Rodel informed me that we received a report from the state of Connecticut that we apply, obviously, for reimbursement for Medicaid-eligible services that we provide to our students. As you can see in the second paragraph, Norwalk has seen this reimbursement rate cost go from $400,000 in 1314 to $860,000 in 1415. And next year, based on the claims we put in this year, the district will receive $1,458,914 that we'll receive in the 15, 16 school year. I want to underscore that this amount is not only the highest that Norwalk has ever received, it's the highest cost report for reimbursement in the whole state of Connecticut. And this is really a reflection of the administrations, and particularly the work of Nina Laura, to make sure that we are vigilant in applying for every kind of reimbursement that we can based on services we receive. This money will come to the board, and as it has in previous years, and I'm sure it's part of the anticipated income for next year. But I've worked in many districts, and it's been very, very hard to get everyone to fill out all these forms and get the reimbursement that the community is entitled to. I think this is quite an accomplishment. It shows we have an administrative structure in place that's taking advantage of every red cent that we're eligible for. So again, not only the largest amount of money that Norwalk's ever received, it's the largest, highest-cost report of reimbursement in the state of Connecticut. So you have districts a lot larger than us, with a lot more students receiving special ed services, and we are receiving, because of our administrative vigilance, the highest amount in the state of Connecticut. And hopefully, no one changes the rules, because we've learned them and we've learned it well. And the last issue is, in your, and this goes to a correction. When we discussed special education two weeks ago, and we talked about the need for transferring, I believe it was $458,000, to cover additional costs of additional students that had been placed out, we all did some projections on the amount that we had that day, and we projected out that if we divided the number that we were asking the board to increase by the number of students at that point, and we made an assumption that all those students have been placed out effective April 1st. So we were looking at a three-month projection, and that projection was $57,000 average for, per student for three months. Now, if you projected that over a full year, we're projecting out to, I think, $225,000 a student. I stopped breathing when I heard that amount, to be honest with you. And, you know, Richard and I went back, and it's based on the information we had then. We didn't know that many of these students have been placed out much earlier in the year. So we weren't looking at a three-month, you know, three-month cost projection. Many of them have been placed out as early as January and February. So just for the record, because if you look at our minutes, it says $200-plus thousand. For the record, if you project the average outside placement over a year, it's $70,000. Still a lot of money, but a lot less than $225,000. So a lot of, when we have our meeting with the Finance Committee, and we're going to go into this in a lot greater detail, but I just wanted the record to show that our average cost is not $225,000 per student, which is a quarter of a million dollars, and four students have you up to a million dollars. So it's, I just want the record to show that. And then, obviously, we'll have a lot more detailed information. And then, obviously, we'll have a lot more detailed information when we, when the finance committee meets and we discuss the whole special ed placement situation in greater detail. And that concludes the three things I want to, four things I want to report.
Thank you. Ms. Keys?
If I could just ask Jim a question, if we could just digress back in regards to the ID card. So it's effective, every employee of the school will have it?
Yeah, every employee has a Nova card now. I just got mine. But all of the hourly employees come in, they swipe in and out anyway, it's part of payroll. The people who don't swipe in and out now are certified staff teachers, administrators, nurses, and some executive staff, basically, in this building. And so, effective next, you know, next Monday, everyone will swipe in and out. For most people, it'll be just, you know, beginning of the day, end of the day.
Or if they go out for lunch, in and out.
Yeah, well, the people, the hourly people, we're not gonna worry about.
Right, but you're talking to certified.
The certified people, you know. And for many of us, we might be in four or five buildings during the day. So you're gonna find, you're gonna find us, you know, when we pull up Nova time, you're gonna find us in all those buildings. But the main reason for doing it is just to get an accurate inventory of who's in the building, if first responders have to come, and unfortunately, if they do a building search and, you know, we've seen, unfortunately, we see many of these things in recent years as, as, only two years ago in Newtown.
Well, I'm glad that this is happening. A lot of districts have that, whether certified, non-certified, have the card. My other question is, during the summer, we're gonna have a lot of employees who aren't working in the summer. So do we confiscate those cards and issue new cards? How is that? Because if they have the same card, then they can get in at any time.
Yeah, the card does, all the card does is, it doesn't give entry to the building, it just, they swipe in and know I'm there. So...
It doesn't open the doors.
No, it doesn't open the door, it's just, it's just, many of, many of the big offices do it too. I mean, you try to get into most offices today, corporate offices, you don't get in without something else. And one of the issues, and I'm still working on it, we think we've resolved this issue for the school day. The big question, I haven't figured out the answer yet, what do we do with after-school activities? What do we do where we have non-Board of Education employees, particularly in after-school activities, who don't have swipe cards? What do we do during the summer? So that, I haven't resolved that yet. I hope, you know, I'm working very closely with Rich and with Bob Kalacki to see how we can work it out. But right now, we just feel very confident, at least we have, we'll have an accurate inventory during the school day. It's, you know, some people resist it a little bit. It's not Big Brother, it's not anything like that, it's really for all of our safety.
Yeah. Sherrell, you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to say, the Norwalk Public Library, we are on the Nova time system as well. We use it as payroll.
Right.
But you're not...
Not this part of it. You see, the salaried employees, we don't go to Nova time for their payroll records. The hourly employees, we do, but they're doing it already. They swipe in and swipe out. And our purpose here, as I said, is just a real-time inventory of who's in the building and who's not.
So Nova time is in each of the schools already?
Pardon me?
Nova time is in each, oh, that's true.
Yeah. It's already in for payroll and everything else. And originally, for payroll purposes, not for safety purposes, we did have people swiping in and out, and for some reason, the previous HR department decided they, it wasn't necessary anymore from a payroll point of view. But I'm looking at it from a, from a safety point of view.
I remember now. And then I just have one other question. I understand that the projected cost per year per student for special ed is set for outplacement is seventy thousand?
About, it's approximate, you know, an average, right.
You also mentioned fifty-seven thousand, and I think I missed what...
At the ma, at the last meeting, we, without having all the dates, we just took the number of outplacements, the total cost, I think it was four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, did simple division, and it came out to fifty-seven thousand dollars for three months. We thought it was for three months, kids. And then if you put that out over a year, fifty-seven thousand would come out to two hundred and twenty, I think it was two hundred and twenty-three or two hundred and twenty-four thousand, which is really, you know, really, really high. So that's what, after the meeting, I sat down with Rich and we both said, we looked at when these kids were placed out, and many of them were placed out many months before. So we redid it, and right now, for this year, the average, the average outside placement cost per child is about seventy thousand, which is a little high. But all you need is a couple of placements, and we do have a couple, they're well over a hundred thousand dollars, and, you know, that drives it up.
And Jim, that doesn't include the cost of transportation?
No, it doesn't. And that's part of them, we have our, we have our meeting with the finance committee, we want to show that too.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next, we, we're gonna have a presentation by CES. Mike Barbis is our representative to CES, and he set that up. Why don't you introduce this for us?
So Esther's coming down here, there will be a presentation you'll see on the screen. Their CES is one of five, six RESCs in the state of Connecticut, and these are set up by the State Department of Education, and they're these regional agencies. I think you've heard people talk about the CREC reports, and they did several reports on special ed. CREC is actually the capital region, it's from Hartford, but they do these studies. There's a one member, sometimes two members from each member, or school system, that's part of CES, Cooperative Educational Services, and we meet once a month as a board. And there are all sorts of things, which Esther will discuss, but the reason we really wanted her to come was at one of the board meetings I was attending, there was a lot of talk about the efforts that are being made by CES as well as the rest of the RESCs in conjunction with the State Board of Education to get more minority teacher recruitment. And there have been a variety of efforts, which I think you'll hear her talk about, where they were recruiting teachers from other parts of the country that come up here, and those efforts really failed, and so there's a whole different kind of approach now. And this is something in our master plan that we wanted to have, an active minority teacher recruitment effort. And I thought this would be a resource that could really help us. I've been talking to our HR director, Bob Deluski, about this, and I think, we're hoping this will make us more effective going forward. So Esther, thank you very much for coming down tonight.
Thank you very much. I will make this a brief presentation, but would be happy to meet with the subcommittee at some point for further information. I know you have lots to discuss at your board meetings. Esther Bobowick, I am the Director for Professional Development Services at Cooperative Educational Services, Forty Lindeman Drive, Trumbull, Connecticut. We are one of six regional education service centers, as Mike indicated, and one of our initiatives is around helping districts look at the recruitment and retention of minority educators for both teachers and administrators. My partner in crime here will be flipping the slides, but you do have a copy in front of you. Those are, that's, those are the acronyms for the six RESCs that you see up on the slide. We've been working at this for thirty years, looking at how we can help districts to diversify the teacher workforce. Funding has come through the State Department of Ed since about 2009, significant funding. Prior to that, we utilized our own agency funds, some small grants, and other funding resources. With those small amounts of money, what we used to do was to go to the historically black colleges down south to try to recruit teacher candidates to come to Connecticut. What we have found over the years is that was unsuccessful. Connecticut's too expensive, it's too cold, our winters are rough. Certification has intensified so that it's not reciprocal in some of the ways that it used to be. And we have now put into place very high standards for teachers in Connecticut. For example, Praxis, which I'll talk about in just a second. We continue to have this vision around making a difference by having a larger, diverse workforce for our students. And as such, I am going to share with you, as a result of our review of our past, where we're going and where we have been with initiatives that we believe work more successfully to attract and retain minority teachers in Connecticut. Again, and that is really our mission, to assist Connecticut school districts to recruit, hire, develop, and retain a racially, ethically, and culturally diverse teaching and administrative So our goals that you see right there are to provide services to districts to assist in diversifying staff. We will go and do presentations such as this, we will market the programs that you're gonna hear about in just a second. We will help do some data analysis. We will help talk with HR directors about the hiring process and why, why is it then, when minority candidates get to that interview, why is it that they aren't selected? We've got data that, that will give some information about that. We have yes clubs, we talk to students about why education is a very viable career, and we are working right now with higher ed, which I'll tell you about in a minute. We want to help districts develop a climate that values and supports a diverse staff. I would tell you that years ago, we made a presentation to the Connecticut State Board of Education. In those days, tolerance was the word that people were using around a minority recruitment event. We are trying to transfer tolerance to value. We believe it's extremely important for students to have staff that represent a variety of cultures, and it doesn't matter whether it's an urban district or a suburban district, all students should have access to a diverse workforce. Providing programs that attract and retain minority teachers, and I'll mention that in just a second. And career development for minorities to become educators, which, again, I'll speak to when we actually talk about the programs. And obtaining certification is extremely important with high standards in Connecticut, there's definitely a need for support. So our first program that we have honed in is on Praxis preparation. Candidates for teacher certification programs must pass the Praxis or have a certain score on the SAT. People that are coming from different countries or who have not taken the SAT find that they have to take the Praxis test, which is a basic skills test, but it's still at a very high level. We offer a prep program, and we have had over four hundred people participate over the last four years. We offer scholarship for minority teachers to take the prep program. We ask them to sign off on their scores so that we know whether they passed or not. What we're, what we're seeing right now is that it becomes overwhelming and they don't end up taking the test. So we're disappointed in our current data, and are currently reevaluating whether or not we should offer Praxis preparation. We're finding that the universities are already offering it and are thinking about partnering with the universities so that folks get it at the collegiate level, and that we would use our funds to support some of our other programs that we have been more successful with. It, it is really difficult. They come to the prep, they get all excited, they wait a month to take the test, and then they chicken out. And so then they come back and take the prep again, and we, you know, really try to encourage them, but we can't make them take the test, we're just trying to prep them for it, and many of them don't follow through for their own fear of test-taking. The scholarship program has been extremely successful. Our belief was that as we saw candidates pass the Praxis and enter teacher certification programs, the burden of tuition is huge. Many are, many are folks that are working full-time and they have childcare expenses, et cetera. So we are offering twenty-five-hundred-dollar tuition scholarships, and that has been extremely successful. People have used that wisely. We have a three-tiered process for trying to provide those scholarships for different types of teacher certification programs, including the alternative route to certification, which is a shorter program, and when people pass, they get into the workforce much more quickly. We offer about thirteen to fifteen scholarships per year, and I would tell you, since that's the program I'm involved in, I interview every single candidate, and I get so excited every single time I interview every single one of them. They are thrilled to be in this country, they are thrilled to be considered a teacher, they don't understand why teachers are not happy in their jobs, they don't understand why kids aren't happy with their teachers, they just can't wait to get started. They are a breath of fresh air and extremely appreciative of the small amount of money that we're able to give them. And I would tell you, seventy percent of those scholarship awardees have been hired into the workforce. Our third major initiative is called Pathways to Teaching because we believe that, again, rather than going down south and trying to bring people up here, we have wonderful students in Connecticut at a high school level that we can inspire to be teachers. So we've developed a program that allows students to be a part of what we call the Pathways to Teaching at the high school level. They do shadowing, they participate in many different activities that give them exposure to what happens in teaching. What makes our program unique is when they go off to college, we continue to mentor them their freshman and sophomore year, with the hope that when they're juniors, they'll matriculate. If they do matriculate to become teachers, we buy their books for them, and again, mentor them until they get out the door. This is a new program for us, and I think next year will be our biggest class of juniors. Right now, I think we probably have five that have matriculated to be teachers that we're continuing to support. We're very proud of this program. It's in eleven different school districts now, and if the state would give us more funding, we could expand that. Right now, all of these programs I'm talking about are of no cost to any of the districts. It's coming through the RESC Alliance, and we are providing the service at no charge. So the Pathways to Teaching, we have great hopes for. You also have a copy of our annual report, which talks about the budget, how we divide the budget into the different initiatives that we have. One item that may not be present in our annual report, because that was last year's report that we're piloting this year, again, it's been very successful, is a peer network. We talk about retention, and once we have teachers of color who have been able to be hired, we want to retain them. So we've started a peer network where they get together and talk about the issues that they are faced with, either with their own peer group, with parents, with students. What are those challenges that they face as they become part of a diverse workforce? That peer network is, has been very powerful for the people who have attended, and we would like to expand that next year. So as I said, as we look at the success of the Praxis program and are not finding that that has yielded the results that we want, we may transfer some of those funds into additional scholarships and to expand the peer network. You'll see evidence of that in our annual report. This is the website that anyone can go to, to find out more about our activities and the people that are involved in each of them, or any information that certainly I'm not presenting in such a short presentation, but all our names and emails are there. I would be happy to meet more people individually, HR departments, or, as I said, meet with the subcommittee who really is focused on this issue. We believe it's extremely important. When we go to the next slide, you'll see our continued goals are gonna continue our program, but in fact, one of the things we want to do is start working more closely with higher ed. And I have sad information from the higher ed folks, which is that we are not even getting minority candidates into the undergrad programs. When I was with Western Connecticut State University, they have one minority in their current undergrad program. UConn has one, one minority in their undergrad program, and they are not attracting the students. We need to work at that, we absolutely need to work at that. So we're looking at that. One of the things you'll see on the slide is a symposium for males of color. We're trying to get young males, African-American males, to consider teaching. We need them in our diverse workforce. So we have a symposium coming up in May to have them come and hear a panel of African-American men talk about their role in education, why they love teaching, why they love being administrators, again, trying to attract them to consider that as a career option. We are looking at collaboration with other national organizations that you see on the slide. The peer networking, we just started this year and hope to expand that. And also looking at year-long internships for young people who may be in college and maybe they want to work in a school district for a year and try it out, and then matriculate. So we've got a few things on the books that we're looking forward to expanding as well as starting anew. Thank you for your present, for allowing me for this presentation. I'll entertain any questions, if anybody has a question.
Any questions, Ms. Sherrell?
If I heard you correctly, you mentioned that the historically black colleges, the recruitment was not successful. So have you totally mixed that?
Not at all. We currently are working with the State Department of Education, who has also initiated a statewide minority teacher recruitment committee. They are still very interested in looking at that as an option, so we are right in the process of presenting our data to them as to what wasn't working. So we are right in the process of presenting our data to them as to what wasn't working and looking at how we might tweak our past approach so that in fact, it might still be something that we could consider. For example, maybe there would be financial support for people who would come up. There might be money for rent. There might be money for childcare. Are there ways that would be attractive for candidates to come to Connecticut based on the feedback that we've gotten about why people don't want to come up here? So we are absolutely continuing to look at that with this new committee that has just been put, put in place by the state.
And my follow-up is I think I heard you mentioned that education standards have changed and that's one of the reasons why it's a little difficult. We hear this all the time, not just centered around the black colleges, but teaching, teaching reading. So I'm wondering if when, when you find that situation, do you go back and talk to the schools about their syllabus or their curriculum as far as preparing the students?
We haven't done that as of yet. We have a small budget, which you'll see, we've focused very deeply on the initiatives at hand. We have lots of ideas of things that we feel we could to, to improve this if the State Department would give us additional funds. Since the state just started last year, this new statewide committee, I just got an email today, they are willing for us to actually create a plan for them. Since we've done a lot more work on this than they have, we've been at it for 30 years, they're very open to a plan. So we hope to take some of our wish list and bring it to the forefront with a price tag, expand the involvement. There are lots of folks in the state interested in this topic. We want to include more partners in this process and look at trying to attract people to the universities out of the high schools, trying to work with the colleges so that they do a better job of preparing these folks for jobs. I would give you an example. I tried to hire a young gal out of Danbury and she passed the first interview with flying colors, brought her back for a second interview. She was not prepared at all, was not able to hire her. Called her on the phone, had a conversation and I said, "I just don't understand what happened." And she said, "I didn't realize the second interview was hard, was supposed to be harder than the first. I thought it was time to get to know me." So she really didn't have any coaching with what that meant. She was a second-year teacher. And so that's the kind of support we want to continue to provide for people that may come from out of state, that may not understand the rigor and the standards that we have in Connecticut. So we're really looking forward to it, but we need a lot of help. Need a lot of help.
I, I commend you because I think it's very important that you give that feedback to the schools.
Yes.
So that they can prepare the kids, well, the students.
Yes. One of the things the State Department did do this year was they offered planning grants for districts who wanted to rethink their whole recruitment process. I think that Norwalk joined as part of a cooperative effort with a variety of districts. But if that comes around again, I will be talking very specifically with your HR department about Norwalk applying just as Norwalk, because you have some great things in place. And I would love to see funding come here and really have some support for what you've been trying to do all along.
That's it, I'm sorry. That segues into my final question, I promise. I was just wondering if you will work with Norwalk, will you get the men of color, the administrators and the teachers of color to talk to the recruits?
A subcommittee from Norwalk would decide what would work best in the climate here, what would work best with the schools here. It's sometimes a customized approach because Connecticut is a very diverse state with different types of school districts all over. And we would really want to customize it to what would be attractive to the students here. So we would really work very closely on refining that for your purpose.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, one.
Yeah.
Quickly, your, it says your annual budget was $300,000 and was that funded by the state?
Correct.
Is that the extent of your budget?
Correct.
There's no other?
Every year.
No other funding?
No.
Okay, so it's just a, a grant, if you will, from the Department of Education?
What we've been able to do is recently now, I think we're actually a line item so that if there are grant funds that are cut, we are not cut. At least for the next two years, this year and next year, we are a line item in the budget. So we are already planning for our work for next year. That's why we're trying to be really smart about how we use the small amount of funds that we have. And since we haven't seen the results in praxis prep, we're not going to continue it. We're going to be brave and say, "What else can we try?" But it is a small amount of money when you look at the millions and millions of dollars that are given out by the State Department of Ed. And we just so believe in this initiative that we offered to help the state create a plan and they have welcomed our participation in that. We're just trying to set a date and hopefully we will be able to be successful in expanding the programs, expanding the budget and expanding the influence that we believe we can have on districts that are interested and ready for the recruitment process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Can I, so can you just walk me through, so for the, for, you know, a given student who wants to become a teacher, so you get an undergraduate degree, maybe it's something you want to teach or maybe not. And then you would go, then you, once you get your graduate, undergraduate degree, then you go, you have to get a graduate degree?
Yes. In Connecticut, you have to get certified as a teacher, which means you have to participate in a teacher prep program at an education prep university in Connecticut. There are private schools as well as there are state-sponsored schools. You then have to complete the course requirements and take, now I'm not quite sure if you have to take a reading test, depending upon what grade level you're going to teach, right?
You're not one of your schools to teach either.
Yeah. And you have to take another praxis in your content area. So there are praxis, it's called praxis two, which are more challenging than praxis one, which is really your basic test. And there are options for prep, for the praxis two tests as well. Once you achieve that certificate, then comes the hard part, which is trying to land a job. And we are trying to encourage minority students, if they're interested in education, to go into the shortage areas where it's more likely that they'll get a job. So that's in world languages, science, mathematics, ESL. And many of them that go through the state's alternate route to certification program, which is focused on the shortage areas, do get jobs if in fact, they present themselves as a confident viable candidate.
So if we know or we're working with, you know, younger, you know, kids in high school, what's kind of the best advice, you know, we can give them to encourage them to look at this as a career? Because you're not, it's not like you're going to go to undergrad and decide in your freshman year, you're going to become a teacher. I mean, I guess you're good.
Well, what I would love is for the state to increase the funding and for Norokai and for Brian McMahon to start a pathways to teaching program, which would mean that the students would have an opportunity to hear about education. But when they leave you on graduation day and go off to college, they are mentored and they stay in touch with a school-based mentor who continues to encourage them to stay the course. Because what happens is science grabs them and business grabs them and sometimes their parents say, "You're not going to make any money as a teacher." And without someone really kind of holding them, holding their feet down, saying, "Stay the course. You love teaching. Be a teacher." We try to get them to that junior year and support them in their desire to matriculate as a teacher. And if they do that, then, you know, we've done, done our job. But those two years of college make it very difficult to stay the course. So we have paid mentors that stay in touch with them. We meet with them over the holiday break and really just try to keep them inspired about the wonderful aspects of being a teacher.
And if we wanted our high schools to be part of the pathways program, is that something we apply to or do we need to get the funding from the state or how would?
I will know more after we meet with the state around the plan and if they're willing to expand the funding for this. One of the other RESCs, Crec and Learn are in charge of the pathways to teaching program. We have not considered expanding the program for a fee because we believe it's the state's responsibility to help continue expanding this program, which is why we're so happy to have an opportunity to meet with them and discuss it. But Stratford is also very interested and I keep saying, you know, "What about my end of the state? We haven't done anything there." And they, you know, my colleagues say, "We've got to figure out how we're going to find money to do that." So you will be first. If in fact, there are opportunities to expand the pathways to teaching in my region, I will be right in touch with your superintendent and your board to say, "I'd like to do a presentation on this and bring in your high school principals and see if in fact, that's something you might want to consider."
Awesome.
Can I ask a quick question? It looks like the hurdle that you're having or that we're having is that you're having students that are graduating and getting their undergrad degree, correct? But the problem is taking the test, the praxis test.
The folks that come to praxis prep are more folks that already have a job, but they do not have an undergrad degree.
An education?
Or they have an undergrad degree, but they don't have a teaching certificate. So they might be an accountant, they might be a bank teller.
Okay.
They might be, you know, in a different job, but now they want to go into teaching.
Teaching, okay.
So the alternate route to certification requires that you have passed praxis one in order to be accepted into a teacher prep program.
But it looks like the anxiety is passing the test. So you're, you're showing many of the students are taking the prep test, but when it comes to the actual test, they're not taking it.
Correct.
So is there a way, and I know you discussed this, but if you can refresh my memory, if there's anything that we can do, you can do as far as them overcoming those obstacles? Because they're that close, they just need to...
We've talked about test prep. We've given them the skills. I, we can't...
Maybe mentoring or some, having teachers that have their degrees that are, have been teaching for a while, maybe coming in and saying, "You know, I've gone through this test. It's, you've just got to study. I can help you out." Maybe having some kind of mentoring. Because to me, they're that close and it looks as if it's a career change and something they're passionate about, which is teaching. But having that kind of one-on-one or group or, or single mentoring, I think might be helpful.
Well, you know, it's interesting that you would say that because one of the districts that did apply for this planning grant around minority recruitment was Bridgeport. And their focus is around peer professionals in the schools.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of support already from teachers to say to them, "Do this. You need to do this.
This is a great profession.
You'd be wonderful. We need you." And that's how they're going to recruit a wider minority workforce in their schools is by focusing on peer professionals.
Maybe we could do something like that in Norwalk, might be possibly an option.
So to your point about mentoring and encouragement, you know, every day they're going in, working with a teacher who will continue to inspire them to say, "You can do this. You can do this." So...
And then being in the classroom and seeing how rewarding it is and...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And for anybody who's in the audience, there are extra handouts up here if anybody would like those.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to the action items.
Sorry.
No questions, I promise. I just wanted to thank Barbis for her...
Oh, thank you, Mike.
You're welcome, Mr. Barbis.
All right. So first item is the consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar is item 2A, approval of personnel. 2B, designate May 4th to 8, 2015 as Teacher Appreciation Week. And 2C, designate Wednesday, May 6th, 2015 as School Nurse Appreciation Day. Chair and entertaining motion approved. Mr. Kasimov moves. Is there a second? Ms. Harris, second. Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Keyes?
I just want, can I just add a comment? I know that Emily Lopez is retiring, or she's resigning, I'm sorry, retiring. I just want to thank her for her hard work and dedication. I believe she's worked at Columbus, I think, close to seven years, if not longer than that. I think she's really been instrumental in the success of Columbus. I know many of the staff will be very sad to see her go. And I just wanted to wish her the best of luck in her new position.
Thank you. Any other discussion? After that, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, please indicate. And that is unanimous. Thank you. All right, next is approved working agreement between Norwalk Public Schools and food, food service workers, Local 1748 of Council Four. Chair and entertaining motion to approve the contract. Mr. Kasimov moves. Second. And Mr. Barbis, Mr. Barbis, would you take us through this?
Yes. This is pretty straightforward. This contract actually had expired June 30th, 2013. It took us a long time to get negotiations going, but we finally did. This is a union with about 100 employees and the salary cost to NPS is about $1.6 million. Our total, total food service operation costs us about $4 million a year. There really were kind of five key points that were addressed here. And there's a summary page here kind of explaining, you know, we looked at the treatment of professional days, the treatment of six days, a change in health insurance, somewhat modification on how grievances are handled, and then a small wage increase. In terms of, I think probably the two most salient points, I think for, for everyone to realize, is this was the last bargaining unit that was still on the old-fashioned PPL insurance. There are only about 15 of the 100 employees are covered by, are covered, have health insurance benefits. They work enough, they qualify health insurance. So it's not a big number, but they will move to a high deductible health savings account, which is what all of our other bargaining units are under at this point in time. And this will save us not quite, but almost $50,000 a year, this change in the insurance. In terms of wage increases, I think they're pretty much in line with all of our other bargaining contracts. They had a retroactive 2% increase for 2013, retroactive 2% increase for last year. And then this coming year, they'll get 2 and 1/4%. So the total cost over the three years would be 6.25%. And this compares to the state average of 6.28. So we're right in line. So I think that's, that's pretty much, those are the key points with respect to this contract. And that was our last outstanding contract, I'm happy to report. And we will be starting negotiations with the National Federation of Teachers.
Anytime.
But that's not for a little bit. So we're caught up with the...
All right. Well, my thanks and congratulations, Mr. Barbis, for running us through a, a tremendous set of the last six months, eight months of union contracts and to clear the whole deck of them is, is quite an achievement and particularly getting everybody on the same page, including internally, internally insurance coverages. It's significant for the school system and major savings over time. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Harris?
I know part of the holdup was people needed to understand the contract and weren't comfortable. After you explained it and after all is said and done, were most of them on board?
Yeah, I think everyone was on board. Really wasn't so much the contract, it was they didn't really, and it's a, come on, it's a complicated concept, but the, an HSA, HSA, health insurance, that was really their concern. So what we ended up doing is we brought our insurance, we have this insurance, was he a rich consultant at the time?
Yeah.
You know, Bob Lindbergh. And he actually sat with them and explained, you know, how the HSAs work and how we impact them. And so I think once that happened, they were, they were fine. So they're no, they're no, bad feelings right there.
Okay. Anything else? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the contract, please indicate. It is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next, I think I'm going to suggest that we move the next four items as a single motion to approve the lease agreement between Souths and Properties, Norwalk Public Schools, conjunction with City of Norwalk, approve execution of sublease between Norwalk Public Schools, City of Norwalk and First Student, approve services agreement with First Student for type one school bus, and approve services agreement with First Student ECS, really a transportation services for type two. Is there a motion to approve those four items? Mr. Barbis moves. Ms. Keyes seconds. Mr. Roodel, give us the lowdown.
As we put together our budget and we looked for opportunities for improvements, efficiencies, savings, one of the areas that we looked into was transportation. Currently under the existing contract that expires June 30th, the Norwalk Public Schools actually pays one of the higher type one rates for type one buses. And one of the reasons for that is the lack of competition within Norwalk. And part of that is due to the fact that Norwalk does not have a bus depot. So working with Tom Hamilton and the city, we looked at a number of sites to see whether or not Norwalk can have a bus depot for itself. There are not a lot of areas within Norwalk that are zoned, but there is a bus depot currently on 3rd, on Wilson Avenue, that First Student currently leases directly. The issue when a vendor leases what they, a site, they're only going to lease on a short-term basis because if they lose the contract, they obviously don't want to be subject property. The shorter the term leased, the less advantageous it is financially for you. The shorter the term leased, the less advantageous it is financially for you. First Student passes off the cost onto the Norwok Public Schools directly, which is one of the reasons why we pay a high Type One rate. So in negotiations with Stanley Sellexon of Sellexon Property, we looked at ways in which the city could lease it. And since the city has a AAA bond rating, it's on very strong financial footing, it allowed us to offer a lease, have a lease for a longer period of time with much greater financial savings to the district. So when we put out the RFP, we put out the RFP in two ways. One in which the district had a bus depot, and one in which the district would require the vendor to find their own bus depot, essentially. The differences were pretty dramatic. Over a course of a five-year contract, the savings to the Norwok Public Schools is actually $1.1 million. The current contract that we have calls for 4.5% increases each year for Type One buses, which is pretty dramatic. In negotiations with First Student and the other vendors, the recommendation for First Student actually calls for an increase of less than 1% from the current year to the next year, and then increases of 2.5%, 2.5%, 2.75%, and 2.75%. The other big issue for Norwok is we have a very old fleet of buses, buses that range from 100,000 to 125,000 miles on individual buses. So we really wanted to upgrade the fleet within this RFP. So currently, we have 52 Type One buses. So this agreement calls for 42 brand-new buses. All the buses would have GPS and cameras on the buses. The other 10 buses, while would be used, the maximum amount of miles on the bus can only be 100,000 miles, whereas the current contract calls for a maximum amount of miles of 125,000 miles. The first year savings for next year, just from having the bus depot, was about $184,000. For Type Two buses, these are the buses that really support special education, students who are outplaced. We recommended three vendors, both First Student, who's doing our Type One buses, but also ECS and Relia. We are currently using ECS and Relia. The reason we really wanted three vendors was, with the growing number of outplacements, the uncertainty of how many outplacement, it really gives us a little bit more flexibility in how we could have routes, it gives us a little bit more flexibility in terms of who we can issue routes to. There's also a fair financial savings. The contract calls for about 3.1% increases over a five-year contract, which is down from the current contract. I have with me Joanna Zandveter, who is our coordinator of transportation, as well as Karen Bartrand, who's our purchasing agent. I did bring them here because they worked very, very hard on this contract, and it's really a contract that's very, very good for the school system. Not only does it save over a million dollars over five years, it upgrades the fleet of buses that we have, and it really gives us a little bit more flexibility than we had in the past. Having a bus contract currently, where it calls for 4.5% increases, makes it very difficult to add a new bus when enrollment goes up. If you only have a, if you have an overall budget where your budget's going up 2% or 2.5%, when you have a line item that's going up almost 5%, and then you have to add a bus that could cost, let's say, $80,000, it makes it very difficult to balance your budget. So bringing in those costs and those annual year-over-year increases down, was a pretty, pretty big win for the school system.
Well, I'd like to compliment Rich and the coordinators there on transportation for, for doing this. You know, Jim commented earlier on how we've dramatically increased by a million dollars a year, the reimbursements that we're getting for Medicaid, by having an active staff that's actually out looking for ways to do stuff like that. And this is another example, and I'm very pleased that we have people who are not, you know, kicking off their shoes and sitting back in their office and drawing their paycheck. I mean, you guys are eating the hustings and finding out really creative ways of saving us money that, that both helps the taxpayers and also gives us more funding for students. So I think it's a terrific job, my compliments. Any questions, comments? Mike?
Just one question, I think you touched on this, Rich, but I didn't completely follow. You know, I know we had to add a bus this last year because of these new developments, zoning approves all these developments, but then we never get paid our share, we need to absorb all these students. And I think it was $80,000 to add a bus?
It's about $80,000.
So what going, you know, we know our enrollment looks like it's going to continue growing, we're building more and more of these apartments, what, what's, is that still the same cost if we get, if we have to...
Well, it's, the, the cost of a bus is based on the daily rate, times the amount of days in a school year, so like 181 days. So while the increase, the increase will be about 2.5% before, we were paying every year, you had to have basically a 4.5% increase over and above your daily rate. So the rate, the growth rate with, for a new bus...
It's going to be less. But it was still, be 80,000 roughly, growing at 2.5% a year in terms.
Okay, anything else? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving these four agenda items, please indicate. And it is unanimous, well done, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is committee and representative reports. Let's, well, we don't have a report from you, Mr. Barbis, you just gave it.
I'm done. But I will like to report, I'm sorry to say, Artie, that we should be at the Brian McMahon-Norwok High lacrosse game, we're not, and Brian McMahon is up 10-3!
Oh!
This will be the 11th year. I'm happy to report that the senators...
I'll make it in.
...trumped the bears in mailroom.
It's not over yet, though, is it?
Not over yet, fourth quarter, fourth quarter.
Take care, Harry, get out of here, be careful.
All right, Ms. Keys, got anything for policy?
Yeah, I gave a full report last meeting, because we always have our policy the second meeting, prior to this meeting, which is at 6 o'clock. But for our next meeting, which will be May 19, we have Bruce Morris, who will be giving a presentation on bullying. And we have a lot down the pike, I know we're going to be working on pay-to-play, so we'll be getting more information. So there's quite a bit that we have, and I think we'll be rather busy throughout the summer for policy.
Okay.
You got a little preview tonight from the mayor's advisory group.
We did, we did.
Yep.
Good.
Thank you. All right, on curriculum, we, at our last meeting, we got a full presentation on the new curriculum materials for foreign languages and for social studies for high school and middle school. I just did get a report with some feedback on the one question that we had, which was professional development. I'm going to share that with the committee. The, the funding is in place, we need, I think, about $380,000 for the texts and materials and online resources, and we've got about $450,000 available in the capital budget that was appropriated for textbooks last year. So we should be able to approve those at the next committee meeting. We're also going to be at the next committee meeting going over the science curriculum, and also high school scheduling. You know, it, it does appear that we're going to, because of testing requirements and whatnot, we're going to have to bring both high schools into the same type of schedule, and we're going to get a report on that.
At the same time.
Okay, Mr. Kasemus?
Yes, thank you. We had a facilities meeting yesterday, and Rich Rudel and Alan Lowe came up with another alternative to keep NCC alive. And they will do a full presentation at the next board meeting, so, which will need to approve as well, correct? Because it has to go to common council, and all the paperwork needs to be done by June 30, so we can get that going. So we'll have that presentation next week.
Yeah, I saw the coverage, oh, that's really, really good news.
They did a wonderful job.
Figured out a way to, to downsize it and get it built, and figure out how to expand it later, but I think it's important to get that thing constructed.
Yeah.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, the finance committee meeting, we're in the process of setting up a special meeting in May, waiting for confirmation from the staff. We have a quorum, I understand, from our, from our members, so we're working on that. So there will be a May finance meeting.
Okay. You're going to go with special ed, stuff in particular?
Yeah, highlighting special ed, show, get some other things on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, but then I know some of the board members are interested in attending, so that notice will go out.
Great, thank you. All right, any board member announcements? We'll start this way first, any announcements?
Probably, we're out, we're out.
Yeah, well, you and I were sitting next to each other with my wife at Annie.
Annie, yes, excellent.
Another terrific performance at Norwok High.
Norwok High.
Saw a bunch of the kids out there, because my daughter was, you know, was in the show last year, when they did Hairspray, and now the last year's juniors were this year's seniors, you know, ready to get in their last show. I guess you, you were at the last show, weren't you, Mayor?
Yeah. It was absolutely amazing, my wife and I went, and at the end of the play, I, we were so taken in by the performance, that we went back and spoke with the, with the cast, and the technician people in the orchestra, and it was really, I'm telling you, well, I don't, I'm telling, you all know, it was Broadway quality.
Yeah.
It was absolutely amazing, the choreography, the acting, the costumes, the orchestra, the way they changed the scenery, so professional, everything was amazing. People who miss it, really, for, what is it?
For 10 bucks or something, instead of 500, you go down to Broadway.
Broadway in Norwok, I'm telling you, is amazing.
Yeah. I will, I will note something, you know, to follow up on your point, the choreography was spectacular, I mean, they had dances up there when there were 50 kids on the stage.
Yeah.
And that's all done by two of the students.
Yeah, I know, the, one girl was, Peter Lieber.
Shay Lynn. And Marg, Margot Lieber.
They kept being, remarks that it was a very young cast.
Yeah, a lot of freshmen.
A lot of freshmen.
I think the kid who played Roosevelt was a freshman.
Yeah, there were a couple freshmen.
Annie was a freshman.
Yes, amazing.
Irene Dixon's son was President Roosevelt.
President Roosevelt.
President Roosevelt, he was amazing!
I loved that accent that he did.
I know, he was great.
He was really good.
Fantastic, he was great.
So, yeah, it was great, and it's great that even with, you know, a number of good seniors graduating, obviously, if you've got a freshman group coming in like that...
Coming in, yeah.
We've got some good shows to go for a while there. Okay, anything else?
Just one thing, I know the superintendent mentioned the After the Bell Program. I stopped down there yesterday and watched the kids as they're coming in. I think it's a remarkable program, an opportunity for the out-of-district students to have some after-school structure, because they didn't have it before. And it was all run so very smoothly, as the buses came in, people were out there greeting them, brought them in the side door, the kids were excited, they were playing, they were having a great time, and they, they didn't know each other, a lot of them, but they made a lot of friends, and I watched it for about an hour, hour and a half, they were really, it was exciting, so, good program.
Good.
So we have the open house cycle, next two or three weeks.
That'd be fun. Sherelle?
Mike and I attended the open house as well, Heidi and her.
I couldn't make it, no.
So we attended the open house.
I was there as well, yeah.
Good.
Did anyone understand why we received the notice so late?
Yeah, I was 20.
It came the day before, yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't make it.
Did anybody here?
They, my understanding is that they put it together four days ahead of time, so that was one of my questions.
It was rushed, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I emailed back, because I couldn't make it in.
Very late notice.
They were very apologetic for the late notice, but, you know, let's set up another one, we'll go over there.
Come another time.
Brian?
Yeah, just say, I'm looking forward to Ms. Murray's finance committee meeting. I did, I was happy with that bus contract as well, but I would like to point out the special ed, the, the transportation costs alone are $12,000 a student, so, I mean, that's got to be part of the equation that we look at when, when we convene next week. So I'm looking forward to that, and a quick shout-out again to Mr. Rudel, who's helped me climb up the learning curve, his, his analysis is, is, is very, very good, in-depth and timely, and it's helped me out tremendously, so, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Rich. Artie?
Real quick, as you know, I have four children. My oldest son, who's 26, now graduated Norwok High School, he didn't go to college, she went to Norwok Community, and then went off and has a career at St. Leonard's. But my next son is graduating from college next Tuesday, from Eastern Connecticut State University, and so I just, I'm a proud dad.
Great, congratulations.
Our first.
Congratulations.
I may shed a tear next week.
You're entitled.
Proud dads are entitled.
All right, so that'll do that, and we'll move on to approval of minutes. These are for the April 21, 2015 meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Kasemus moves, Ms. Keys seconds. Any changes or corrections? I, we've already noted it'll go in tonight's minutes, the updated numbers, the actual costs for special ed. And if there's no changes, we'll proceed to a vote.[1770.51]